I'd like to make a motion to open the special hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Alright, so if you'd let me address the meeting.
Roll call, roll call.
Can I have a roll call, Patty?
Here.
Councilman Richard G. Clinchy.
Here.
Councilman Anthony J. Sarico.
Here.
Councilman Thomas A. Garrity Jr.
Here.
Supervisor Rick Morrissey.
Present. Okay, this is a continuation of a public hearing that we began probably two years ago. It was published and post, excuse me, excuse me, it was a continuation of our hearing. We have some exciting news, we have some exciting news if you want to hear it. Stop it. Stop it. Excuse me. You will have. Stop it. This is. If you would please return to your area, I would be happy to address that. Come on, listen, I have an opening statement, if you obviously let me make it, you might learn. I certainly will, certainly will. Okay, we are, we are in Reese Park, we're in Reese Park for a good reason. Because we can, we're not meeting in our townhouse, it's too small to accommodate, to accommodate this group. So, you can have a public here, you can't have a gathering of more than 50 people. The town, the town board wanted to have a face-to-face meeting, wanted to have a meeting face-to-face, excuse me, excuse me, that's rude. That's rude, can you, can you let us speak?
Oh my God, well, you're here. You're here, let's go.
Okay, so look, this is a continuation of a process, we're trying to form a sewer district, we have some exciting things to talk about tonight, that our town engineers will tell you. This meeting is not only 50 people here, this people, this meeting is being zoomed and on YouTube. We could have just done a YouTube, but we wanted to get the community out together. We didn't want the community out together to have this kind of behavior. There are a lot of people here that want to hear what's going on tonight. So when, when it's time for you to make a public comment, you'll get three minutes, come to the mic, do not touch anything, and we'll continue. So, you will have another opportunity, this is yet another of our series of public hearings, our next, September 10th, September 10th will be another town board meeting, we will incorporate in that town board meeting, a continuation of sewer district formation.
Alright.
So without any further comments before we go to the engineers.
Ready to go.
Okay.
You know, the only thing, Rick, I'd say is that we have a limit by the law of the number of people can be in this space. Alright, good, then don't listen, but, 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 but if you don't mind, as people leave, others can come in if they want to take your space, so as you leave, someone else can take that space.
Alright, alright, so, Rich, I'll just follow up on that, we are, we are currently in a pandemic, it's worldwide, once again, the board, as I said before, wanted to get a face-to-face with your residents. This is something we're trying to bring into the community to benefit you, excuse me.
You don't want it.
Let's not interrupt.
This is something that, that the town is pursuing, this is to pursue a sewer, formation of a sewer district. You will have your opportunity to talk, to speak, but unless we proceed with the meeting, this is not going to happen. We also will have a vote on this, up or down, and the decision is yours, it's not the town boards, our obligation was to protect your environment, your drinking water, and your lakes. So with that, I'm going to introduce Joe Barbagallo, which is the town consulting engineer, thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Rick. Can everybody hear me? Okay, great, thank you. So thank you, Rick, it's nice to see everybody tonight, I am Joe Barbagallo, I'm the consulting town engineer and have been so since 2010, and I'm also a longstanding resident of the town of Somers, and it's nice to see you all here tonight. Installing sewers in Shenarrack and Lincolnale have been a part of the Westchester County and the town of Somers planning for a very long time. This project was identified as an important environmental project to improve water quality and in these impaired water bodies since the 1990s when the watershed agreement between New York City DEP and the communities of Westchester was executed. Those agreements allocated $50 million towards sewer projects, including $10 million for the town of Somers. Since then, the town has been preparing for this project. In 1998, as part of the development of the preserves, infrastructure was sized and installed to accommodate the flow from your communities and convey it to the Westchester County Treatment Plant in Peekskill. That infrastructure remains in place to this day. The sewers were not installed at that time or since due to political hurdles at the county Board of Legislator level. In the spring of 2019, the town was successful at working with our county planning department, county executive, and county legislators to overcome those longstanding hurdles. The town is very appreciative of the support for this important environmental projects from legislator Koval and legislator Gashi, and thanks to their leadership, there is now support at the county level to expand the county district, to accept this flow, utilize the installed infrastructure, and release the $10 million. In the summer of 2019, the town embarked on a series of public meetings and hearings that led to a vote by the town board in September to form the district, and a public vote was scheduled. After the town board vote, the public provided additional input to the town, and the town made the decision to postpone the public vote and work with the county to improve the affordability and equity, and make modifications to the map plan and report to make the cost allocations more clear, clearer to the public. That map plan and report was prepared and circulated to each of the homes in the two communities in March of this year, so you all have received the updated map plan and report, and if you don't have it, it's still available on the county website, so you can, excuse me, on the town website, so you can, if you wanted to see a digital copy, it's up on the website. There are some important aspects relative to the map planner report that I wanted to bring forward that are changes from the last time that we were discussing this project. First, working closely with the county, the town was able to get the county to agree to not assess connection and O&amp;M costs to homes until construction begins, that brings the sewer in front of your home. Therefore, homeowners that cannot connect will not pay county fees. This was a substantial win for the residents of these two communities, as residents would not be paying the county for services that they would not receive until some future date. That was a big point raised by you all, or some of you anyway, and I think it's a very big win, in my view, for the residents. Also, at the request of the community, we had some additional meetings, and we did informal surveys of how to allocate the debt service historically, or last time we were allocating, based on the value of your home, and based on your input, we have now, that is a flat fee, so all, all property owners, all parcels, would, will be assessed on a flat fee basis, so there's equity from parcel to parcel. Some additional developments that are in process right now, as the town is working with the Army Corps of Engineers to secure $1.3 million in grant funding to support the project, that's in addition to the $10 million we already, that will be released upon a successful vote. The contracts are being circulated and are scheduled to be executed upon the award to a contractor to complete the first phase of sewer work. The county is also in the process of developing legislation that would provide financial relief to lower-income households for the connections to installed sewer infrastructure. That process is moving forward, and the town is working with the county planning and legislator Koval to incorporate provisions that will allow eligible residents to benefit from this county program. That's still in development, and there's still a timeline before that will be voted on, but there's nice progress, and it will benefit the lower-income residents within your communities. Also, as a note, for those of you who live in Shenarrack, it is important to note that the bond associated with the water district will be paid off in April of 22, of April of 2022, thereby reducing your household cost by the number you see on your annual taxable associated with the water bond. It's different for each of you because that is a function of your assessed value, but those bonds and those costs to the Shenarrack residents will expire on, in April of 2022. So tonight begins the process to move towards the town resident vote on the sewer district. Steve, my colleague Steve Robbins is going to walk through some of the project details and costs, but my closing thoughts to you, my fellow Somers residents, is that the time is now to move forward on this important, long-conceived project to benefit water quality of the lakes in your communities and the drinking water quality in your homes. We have already identified $11.3 million to offset your costs, have county support, support at all levels to move the project forward, and upon a positive vote officially forming the district, we will be positioned to apply for additional funding through New York State grant programs, most importantly, we, up to $12.5 million is eligible for this project under that program. But again, we cannot apply until we have the district formed. And it will also, by having the district formed, will allow us to work with the New York City DEP and additional, for additional funding support as well. In addition, officially forming the district will allow the district to take advantage of any shovel-ready projects, stimulus money expected out of Washington in 2021. So the time is now, if the community does not support this project, you will lose the $10 million in funding from the county, you will lose the $1.3 million in the Army Corps, and you will see the degradation of the lakes and drinking water quality in your communities continue. Supporting the project will improve the environment, remove potentially harmful constituents from your drinking water, slow the degradation of your lakes, and ultimately improve your property values. Thank you for your time, and Steve is going to walk through some of the details specific to the project.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Good evening, my name is Steve Robbins, I'm a project manager with the Towns Consulting Engineer, Woodard &amp; Curran, and I'd like to walk through a few key details on the project. I did note, as some folks are coming in, there are some fact sheets up there for folks to take, that lay out some of the costs, the timing of the costs, and answers to some frequently asked questions, so if you didn't get one on the way in, certainly grab one on the way out. At full buildout, this project will result in the connection of 989 parcels to the, in the R-10 zoning district, to a public sewer. This would divert approximately 326 hundred thousand gallons per day of sanitary wastewater out of the Amawak Reservoir Watershed, and send that to the Westchester County Waste Water Treatment Plant in Peekskill. The project will cost a total of 62.2 million dollars to construct, with the first phase approximately 103 homes costing $10 million. This first phase of construction is fully funded with funds allocated to the town for this use, and no debt is incurred in Phase 1. After Phase 1, the project will be funded through outside grants of $46 million and local district financing of $16.2 million. With the inclusion of the county's buy-in, sorry, with the inclusion of the county's buy-in surcharge to be in the county's Peekskill Sewer District, and the local and county O&amp;M costs, in addition to that local district financing, the cost per home would be $1,187 per year. This maximum annual cost and district expenditure of $16.2 million is capped by the map planner report and subsequent referendum vote, if the vote is approved to go through, and cannot be exceeded without additional public process. These costs are assessed to parcels in the district at different times, as detailed in the handout available and in the map planner report. That handout is also available on the town website, if you don't wish to grab one on the way out. Since no debt is incurred during Phase 1, only those homes in Phase 1 have any annual costs. As buildout proceeds, homes that can connect pay the county and local O&amp;M fees, and all homes in the district pay a proportional share of any district debt service as it is incurred during project buildout. One common question we've received is whether a parcel owner has to pay to connect to the sewer. To make this project equitable between all parcel owners in the district, the town has included the connection costs in the overall project cost. This will include connecting to the pipe that leaves your house, usually where it goes into the septic tank, intercepting it there, and redirecting it typically to the street, adding a pump if necessary based on where your house is relative to the pipe in the street. The project's been structured this way to avoid requiring parcel owners to incur a significant cost upfront, and this is unlike other currently proposed sewer districts in the area, including Bedford and Yorktown. Thank you for your time, and I'll turn it back over to you, Rick.
Thank you. Alright, at this time, we'd like to open this up to public comment. Over here, we have cones six foot apart, if you have a comment you want the board to hear, we would ask you at this time to come up, wait in line, you'll be given three minutes to give us your comments, and let's do it in an orderly fashion. So, public comment is open.
Go ahead.
Take this down to speak?
Yeah. You're more than six feet away.
First of all, I want to thank you for, for the efforts that you've been doing since the last time I came to the meeting. I have heard that this effort, that we don't pay until the service, I agree with you, that is a good win. I appreciate hearing about the Army Corps of Engineers and the possibility of New York City and New York State contributing to this, because I was kind of wondering where that other chunk of money would come. So I want to thank you all for continuing that and letting us know.
Can we have your name?
I have a brief statement and then a question.
Yeah, if we have your name and address.
Sorry, my name is Ed Barron, I live in Shenarrack, 39 Parkway Drive.
Thank you.
Okay. I intend to vote yes to this, and I intend that for two reasons, two numbers. I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but I think I recall, one of the numbers is four. Four represents the density of our living arrangements, I live in Shenarrack, the density of our living arrangement over what is approved or is correct for having septic systems, and I think it's something like, as I read in the materials, about four times, four and a half, so I have the number more or less right. I don't want to wake up one morning and have my neighborhood smell like a sewer, so I think we need to get this done. The other number is 21, and that's the 21st century. Let's move into the 21st century, let's get this done. Actually, the sewer system might even be 20th century technology, but I think we need to move forward with that. Finally, I have a question, and that is, many people here might be wondering the same thing, but I have a particular interest. I intend to put, to redo my driveway, which runs from my garage out to the street, and I'm wondering, where are you doing this? Are you doing it under the street? Are you doing it in the easement on one or the other side of the street where you're running the sewers? And if, if it is on the side of the street, do you have maps available, so I can see if it's my side? Because if I'm going to have a driveway put in, maybe I'll wait a year or two. Is that available?
Yeah, we're going to address your questions, Steve, you can make a note of that.
Okay.
Yes. And at the end of our comment, we'll respond to that.
So not now.
Alright. Thank you.
Good question.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to give you these pamphlets for your consideration, elegant alternative. Jay Bachelor, Ross Drive.
Give mine to Joe.
Our objection is that your intention is to virtually double the average tax, town taxes, and I've just handed you an elegant solution that would cost under $3 million for 120 or so homes that surround the lake, and up and down certain of the tributaries. You're going to inflict $1,100 tax, sewer, yearly sewer tax on us that is, I understand, is open-ended, Peekskill's at 70% capacity, when they get to 100%, they're going to float some kind of god-awful bond, and they will assess us halfway to the moon, and I don't know what percentage we're going to add to their load, but they're taking people on when they get to 100%, I think we're in serious trouble, and we're passing the buck. Ecologically, it's not a kind thing to do. These, these are sewer treatment plants in your backyard, they are run on electricity as your grinder pumps would be, and there is a little lump in the ground, you can plant a bush around, there's a fan, and there's a pump, and by the time it's through circulating, the water that goes into the ground is virtually drinkable. None of us would want to, but it comes within 10% of drinkable. I guess that's all for now, but I hope you'll seriously consider this, it's a simple solution that uses up to 10 million, if you put a million into cleaning, actually cleaning the lake, and putting a couple million towards Lincolnale, this can be done within 10 million. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Sano, 14 Parkway Drive, Shenarrack, I just wanted to thank the board for all they're doing. Between my wife and I, we lived in Shenarrack, Lincolnale our entire lives, we think this is long overdue, we intend to vote yes, and, and I know, I know several of my neighbors are, want to move forward on it and want to vote yes, I just want to state that for the record, thank you for all you're doing.
Thanks for your comment. Anyone, yes, come on.
Hello, I'm Marion Martha, I live at 14 Hickory Road in Lake Lincolnale, I'm a senior citizen, I'm 75 years old, and you guys gave me, you're practically giving me a heart attack here. So here we are, five and a half million coronavirus cases, over 170,000 deaths, smack in the middle of a pandemic depression, with people facing financial hardship, job insecurity, major health threats, and even possible death, and there you are, there you are, still trying to force this sewer down our throats. We didn't sign up for this, I've been living here 30 years, and I bought a house with a well and a septic. We spent a lot of time paying off our mortgage so we could retire here. What are you doing to us? Let me be perfectly clear, I read your promo pamphlet, there's no transparency and collaboration here, the problem is, we don't trust you. You know why? Because you've been stonewalling and sandbagging us all along, and let me be more specific, just so you understand, stonewalling, to delay or block a request or process or persons by refusing to answer questions, you've done this to us many, many times, we can't get answers out of you, you don't return calls, you beat us around the bush, sandbagging, you deliberately underperform to gain an unfair advantage, you coerce and bully us, don't tell us you haven't, you've had an ulterior motive years, you didn't ask us if we wanted this, you're force-feeding us down our throat. Right from the start, you tried to skip a vote referendum, it took our communities coming together to sign a petition in order to assert our voting right, then you even tried to pretend that you didn't do that, even though you required that we get every signature notarized, don't you think we're stupid? You keep changing the rules of the game, first you said each homeowner had to pay for their own hookup, then you said to win over voters, then the district would pay for the hookup, now we learned that there can be multiple hookups, which could not be covered, as well as customized plumbing and electrical systems that need to meet code. What if an older house can't accommodate those upgrades? What if a homeowner cannot afford them? We also don't know where or how much of our property you're going to dig up to lay the sewers. Undoubtedly, there'll be damage to our walkways, driveways, stone walls, patios, mature plantings, years of our labor of love to beautify our properties could be destroyed. There is no contract spelling out terms and conditions, and you'll forgive me if I don't want to take your word for anything, how exactly the district will pay for any collateral damages, where are the collateral damage? But there is one thing we all agree on, that our communities have a very fragile ecosystem. So what I really don't understand, that we both agree on that fragile ecosystem, why did the town board cut corners and decide on their own to skip an extensive environmental impact study? That should have been required, not an option. You would think that the town would want as much information as possible before embarking on such a sweeping development that will cause such drastic changes to our community. If residents did not find all the mistakes that were made in the first engineer's report, we would have voted on a faulty plan. I believe that Somers Sewer District 2 is still faulty, it is incomplete and not comprehensive enough, it seems like the town presents us with sensitive, selective studies that only support their agenda, what else don't we know? Rule number one, do no harm. Sadly.
Ma'am, you're running over your three minutes, we have other people.
They're giving me time. Sadly, I, rule number one, do no harm, sadly, I believe that SS 2 could actually do us more harm than good, in Lake Lincolnale, all the radical excavation and drilling could easily activate severe water displacement and toxic sediment release, residents with shallow wells could see their wells go dry, our water tables could be irreversibly altered and our drinking water polluted, I happen to have delicious drinking water, and I had to test it, and it's perfect, but we don't know exactly how all this construction and development will affect us, because the town board has denied us an extensive environmental impact study, that's nothing less than dereliction of duty. You want to believe you're saving our property values, and they will most likely increase, I'm not so sure about that. Don't home buyers want to know exactly what they are getting for what they are paying? Our neighborhoods will be under construction for many years, the topography and ecosystem will dramatically change, and we don't know what we will find once we open Pandora's Box, you're harming us again. The town board has also downplayed extensive, extended collateral damages that are very often associated with sewers over periods of time, blockages and pipe breaks happen quite routinely, grease that's poured down the drain congeals into big masses that slow the flow of sewage, leaving it no place to go except up the pipes. In Syracuse, New York, there's a city where raw sewage spills into private homes and businesses daily, every incident is horrifying to residents.
Ma'am, if you want to submit your paperwork to the town clerk, the board will take advantage of it and take a look at it, we have.
Alright, you know what, I'll sum up, I'll sum up.
Thank you.
I didn't want to come here anyway.
Well, you could have stayed home and zoomed.
To sum up, it looks like sewers have a potential unlimited financial expenditure and costs, kind of open-ended, you might as well give the town board a blank check to add more insult to injury. Sewer District Number 2 will take away our property rights, along with our freedom and independence to choose our own solutions, if the vote referendum goes for Sewer District 2, and a homeowner If the vote referendum goes for sewer district two and a homeowner does not want to hook up, the town can put a lien on their house and the homeowner could even be steeply fined per diem and/or imprisoned. That harms us. SSD2 is not a good deal for us. We need every no vote at the ballot box. I just want to know, who are you anyway? None of you live in our communities. You are not serving your constituents.
I think we all live in Somers.
You don't live in Lake Lincoln Dale and Shenarruck.
He does.
In Lake Lincoln Dale and Shenarruck. Is he getting sewers?
Eventually, hopefully.
Eventually. Eventually, I'm going to die too.
Not really.
So who are you anyway? You are not serving your constituents, constituents, many of whom have served this town for many, many years. What are you doing to us? We did not sign up for this. You stuffing this down our throat and I'm sorry. There's just no nice way to say this, but this looks a whole lot like you are building the infrastructure for the home builders and you want Lake Lincoln Dale and Shenarruck to pay for it. Shame on you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else here for public comment? And if you would please limit it to three minutes, that took a lot of time away from anyone else that wanted to speak.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, correct? This is not considered a regular town board meeting with public comment for three minutes?
Special meeting for public hearing.
Anytime that you've had a public hearing, you've let people ask questions and speak and it's gone way more than three minutes. Okay, I'm just making note of that. Okay? So I don't have to.
You just had a very emotional speaker.
Yeah, I get it.
And I heard somebody was deferring their time to her.
There's a lot of people who could not make this meeting tonight because it's summertime and people are on vacation. People didn't get notified as usual. You started this process last summer. You were criticized for it. You did not notify the residents and again, you did not. You're legally obligated to publish it in the town newspaper 72 hours prior to a meeting.
As this one was, it was posted on our website.
It was not in the newspaper.
You got a code red notification.
Where in the newspaper was it posted?
We had.
It wasn't.
Publishing and posting. This is a continuation of the process.
So this meeting should really not be taking place because we can challenge the validity of it. You did not put it in the town newspaper.
It's a continuation of a public hearing. That was opened, as you said, last year.
Yeah, right. So really, oh, come on, I, please. There's no lights here, so you know, it gets dark in a few minutes, so we really have to rush, right?
So if you would keep it to three minutes, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, well, it's not going to be. Yorktown did a sewer district, only 315 residents. You told us you couldn't do a smaller district. It can be done, okay? They didn't lump 1,000 surrounding homes into their district and force them to hook up. They were completely transparent in their report. We didn't get transparency. Our overall debt cost would be brought down significantly if each homeowner paid to have their own hookup and then an easement would not have to be placed on their property. I have a list of towns that have done it that way, so why aren't you? You are forcing every one of us to hook up, even if we don't need it. If we don't give permission for easements, what happens then? Everybody needs an easement. I guess I'm not going to get a question, an answer, question answered about that one. Give the houses around the lakes that need the sewer using the 10 million and leave it at that. There's no need for phase two, especially since you don't have the grant money. And in the pandemic, you're not going to get grant money. Governor Cuomo said in an article last week that he is pulling $3 billion for a variety of environmental projects citing the economic crisis caused by COVID. How do you think there will be any money for sewers for us? You have not given the residents the worst-case scenario when it comes to costs, so with no funding at all, you could still proceed with the project and our average finance cost, flat fee, could be as much as $2,200, not 7-Eleven like they're telling you. And we have no guarantee from you that this won't happen and we will be at your mercy. This whole process has been one-sided and sneaky. You say that you've been working with the community members since 2017 on this project, yet none of these people read the reports and found the errors that we all did. These are the same people who continue to post information on social media that is incorrect and not telling people the whole truth. You also have engineers meeting with these folks. It's all ludicrous. Then you hire a PR firm for over $13,000 to try and sell this project for you. They too have gotten things wrong because they are listening to three engineers who have not been able to get a report correct in three years. And we, the taxpayers, have paid them over a quarter million dollars over the last 10 years to do studies and reports. That's only of what I know of. Not to mention they'll be getting paid over $9 million to do this $62 million project. Someone is benefiting from all of this and it's not the taxpayers. At your December 3 meeting, you had post, the PR company come in with their poster boards and we haven't had any meetings since then because everything was kind of dropped. So people haven't been able to ask questions about those poster boards and people who weren't able to make that December 3 meeting. So I know I'm limited on my time, but there's people that have questions about those and they should be answered. One of the best boards that you had up there was my personal favorite, no new property taxes, no new assessments, more lies. The new sewer tax will be on your property tax bill, so it is a new tax. And they can't guarantee no new assessments. It says about hookups, each property is entitled to one connection. They showed three pictures of things that we have to pay for. They were wrong. There are eight things residents are responsible for and you can read that in the map plan and report on page 4-2. There is eight things, not three. Zoning, zoning laws, you're not going to change zoning laws, doesn't mean you can't do it down the line.
And if that's, that's three minutes, we have someone else who'd like to speak.
I'm almost done. Sanitary sewers are not going to do anything about the fact that you are using rock salt all over the town in the winters and it's seeping into the ground. We have 66 miles of streams, to be exact, as noted in your water quality report. Rock salt is killing our lakes and our groundwater because of the chloride in it. It takes one teaspoon of rock salt to permanently pollute five gallons of water. What are we going to do about that after we get sanitary sewers? Because that doesn't address it.
Thank you.
One more thing that people need to know, that it's very irritating that the town board and engineers keep telling residents at no cost to you when somebody gets up here and speaks, or the district has to pay. When they say this, it means us. Anything to do with sewers is being paid for by us, the residents within Shenarruck and Lake Lincoln Dale. If anything has to be repaired or maintained, we all have to pay for it. Sewer charges and costs can go up at any time and the residents are at the mercy of the town and will have to pay no matter what forever. The sewer district has to pay to replace everyone's grinder pumps. Apparently, it's only 25% of residents, which is about 250 people.
We have another person to comment. Your three minutes will be on three.
So do I have anybody else's three minutes?
Yeah, you can have mine.
Thank you.
Can I go first and then maybe she?
Engineers could say about 25% of residents will need grinder pumps.
Take turns and share.
And they need electricity to run. And if you have a power failure, it will not operate. And there's just a certain amount of holding capacity that they have. And you have to severely limit your interior water use until power is restored. They're not telling you about all this. And this is an estimate of residents needing grinder pumps. Because there's been no impact study, we have no idea. There's questions that I have, but I will save that for your next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, I'm Stephanie McQuaid Geiger. I'm going to take my mask off. I actually grew up in Shenarruck. I'm a science teacher. I own a home in Lake Lincoln Dale. I came back to this community because I wanted to raise my family here. And I can tell you, I know of five people at least from the class of 2002 from Somers High School that live in either Shenarruck or Lincoln Dale because we all had this idyllic childhood. I'm a science teacher and I'll tell you something, the science is clear. We need to have an upgrade of infrastructure to these communities. This conversation about if we can do something else. Last summer, I missed one of these meetings because I was out at a program for science teachers, out camping in the woods, that was given by New York City DEP. I became a watershed expert. I am telling you, the chemistry, the science is clear. Our septic systems are too densely populated for where we live. We need to do this. I am tired of having the conversation about if we should do this. And Mr. Bachelor, I appreciate, I grew up down the block from him, I'm friends with his daughter, all of the senior citizens who live here are the parents of people I grew up with. I feel you. But when we come up with other types of solutions, what I'm telling you is, my question is about the DEP money, is for a sewer system because it is a long-term solution.
Let her speak.
It is a long-term solution to the infrastructure problem. Shenarruck has streetlights. That is a long-term infrastructure thing that people pay a little bit more in taxes for and you get a benefit. I never lived anywhere in my entire life that didn't have streetlights until I moved to Lincoln Dale. Okay? My power used to go out when I was a kid. I still had water because in Shenarruck, there was an infrastructure improvement. We need to take the money that is given to us. Five communities in Westchester were identified as the most polluted. Why do you think Shenarruck is being given the money? Why do you think we're the only five communities being given this money? It's because we need it the most. We need to take that $10 million and it's going to go to one of the other four communities. Do you want Yorktown to have an improvement in their community while we let them take our money? I don't understand this. We're giving away the money. And I appreciate very much listening to the members of the community saying we should all split it equally. Everyone gets the same amount. Because I have to tell you, I have that Somers strong sweatshirt and it pains me to see that the children have to get up and leave. I'm a teacher. Children can't be here because we can't be civil with each other? To say that these people in the board are not part of our community? Get real, people. Come on, we are Somers strong and we need to improve our community. Let's band together. We are all in this together. Thank you. And thank you to the board. And if you could answer that one question just about, you know.
So do we want to, ma'am, I think, there's the line over there? Oh, you're just there. So Joe and Steve, we have.
We have people to speak.
Judy, 3 Aspen Road, also 6 Boxwood. So I own two houses and that's also an issue for me because I cannot understand the ethics and legality of owning two houses and only having one vote when I would have to pay twice. Also, my brothers, two brothers are on the deeds with one of the houses since my father died and I was told that they could not vote. And since they would also be paying part of whatever we pay, I think that is unfair and unethical, if not borderline illegal. It's very obvious that the differences of opinion, we will never come to terms. The people who are opposed and against, uh-uh. It's a shame because it's very, very divisive, leading to bad feelings, bad feelings amongst neighbors and friends. My family has owned a house, three houses since 1958. We moved up from the Bronx and Lake Lincoln Dale was the most charming rural community. I've spent 15 years living overseas. I came back to Lake Lincoln Dale because I love it. I recently thought about moving after my father's death to someplace other than Lake Lincoln Dale. I decided to stay here. I'm now having regrets and thinking that maybe I should have moved on because it will break my heart to see the dissolution and change of character of this most beautiful, charming, unique, and special place. Because there's nothing you're going to say to me and many others that I talk to that will not make me, that will make me not believe that your agenda is for development. The great charm of Lake Lincoln Dale, okay, the small houses, I personally love them. I understand people want bigger houses and they will build upon them. But the little parcels of land, what I call mini forests that Lake Lincoln Dale still has, I am sure, I am convinced that they will be built upon. And there goes the beauty and charm of this place that I've loved for 67 years. I feel it's very unfortunate the way this meeting was held. I talked to five people today, again, like myself, older and even older than me, who knew nothing about it. I would like to respectfully request that when there are meetings, you send a letter to every homeowner in Shenarruck and Lake Lincoln Dale so that we fully know about these meetings. All right? The people I spoke to were in their 70s and they were upset and concerned that they didn't know and didn't have a chance to come at the last minute. So much has changed. Obviously, I like old-fashioned. I like yesteryear and many of you will disagree, such as the science teacher who just spoke. I don't apologize for, for how I feel and probably thinking that it's better. I don't understand what's happening, truthfully. I don't know that there was a big horde of people from Lincoln Dale and Shenarruck who went to the town board and said, we are unhappy, we're miserable, come in and change our communities. I believe this is something that you totally did for your own agenda, as other people have suggested. The science teacher talked about lights in Shenarruck. God forbid, that's the last thing I would like to see in, in Lake Lincoln Dale. We are not the city. We are not Yonkers. I believe we don't want to be. My drinking water is fine also and I have a 15-foot hand-dug well from 1937. It still is fine. If not, I can take care of it with a UV system or shock my well with chlorine. As far as, as the sewers, the disruption, the noise, the building, the lack of peace and serenity for years that will go on, I don't want to live as that's going on and see my beautiful Lincoln Dale changed.
Thank you, ma'am. Your three minutes is up.
Well, okay. There seem to me and to others, I've talked to so many other ways that this could have been handled. It's like you're taking a giant step all of a sudden instead of taking smaller steps to begin with, which is the more logical way. You need a public education campaign to tell people, stop fertilizing their lawns, all right? Have the town check that people change, clean their septic, their septic system every three or four or five years, whatever it is. This is not followed through. There are so many other ways we could go without this drastic plan that you, as people said, those of us who feel this way feel you're pushing it down our throats. I personally feel very disrespected. I feel like you're talking to me like I'm a rather stupid child and that you're smarter than myself and you know better. And I resent that very, very, very much. And you don't live in Lake Lincoln Dale or Lake Shenarruck and you haven't lived here for 67 years like we have and it doesn't matter to you. The emotion and the love that we feel for these places, I wish you could understand that and maybe have a little compassion and understanding.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lisa Healy, 7 Magnolia Drive, Lake Lincoln Dale. I mostly have questions, so I'd like to know, when will my questions be answered? Tonight?
Well, it depends certainly how many questions you have. Our engineers have taken at least two.
They're pretty simple.
So you can give, you can email us your questions, we'll get a response.
No, I'd like them tonight. I'd like answers tonight so I can plan.
Well, this is a public hearing where we hear from everyone. This is not a dialogue. You can speak at us, but to get into questions and answers.
First, I'd like to clarify something that the science teacher had said, that this money was, is dedicated to sewers. That is inaccurate. The money is from the East Hudson, East of Hudson Fund and it can be used in any way to improve drinking water and the health of the lakes. That can be septic replacements. It can be used as for the idea that this gentleman presented to you. But yet, you have refused to look at any other option other than this huge, huge financial burden to these neighborhoods. That's my statement. Here are my questions. How have you enjoyed your almost daily walks around Lake Lincoln Dale? I've seen you. Almost daily, how do you enjoy it? You like it, right? Or you wouldn't be driving to the neighborhood, parking your car at the lake parking lot and taking a walk around the lake? You enjoy it, correct? Right? Or you wouldn't do it? Okay? Just imagine all the building that's going to go on? No more walking around the lake for you. May I ask, how many of you, if you love and support our communities, have joined the beach at Lake Lincoln Dale?
I have.
This year?
Last year.
What about this year? When you know it's a financial hardship this year for the lake?
I moved, I'm not eligible.
No, yes, we have, we have the option for outside membership. So, so. So, so you, none of you, especially you, and I will not address you as supervisor because I don't feel you've earned it. Tricky Ricky.
Nice. Well, the electorate would disagree with you.
So, you would, you, you don't even support the lake by joining.
That's, that's three minutes.
I still have more questions. I would like to know the timing of the next meetings and when we're going to have the vote. It is an election year. We are in the middle of a pandemic. We've, we've run into issues in terms of timing with other voting and now you're doing it. If the timing is similar to last year when you started these meetings, we're going to run into issues in timing.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
When will we be receiving answers to our questions?
At the end of, when we close the public hearing. Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment?
My name is Susan Lawrence, I live in Lake Lincolnville. In the beginning, I was all for the sewers, everything sounded great, everything you said sounded great, everything I wanted, clean water, clean lake, et cetera. But so many of my neighbors opposed the sewer idea and I wondered why. And so I started thinking, maybe there is another way to do this. I listened to them, I listened to them. They don't want it. So I thought, maybe there's another way to do this. And I found that, because I have a house also in Suffolk County, and in Suffolk County they have the IA systems, which is an advanced, integrated septic system. It's a lot cheaper than what you propose and I offered that information to each and every one of this board by email and I had received not even an acknowledgement that I sent that to you. I've made phone calls, I even contacted the architect or the engineer that you were using, nothing. Nobody ever got back to me. So I would like for everyone to know that there is an alternative. It's a lot cheaper, it's not as disruptive. We can cover it with maybe half to maybe even a third of the cost of a sewer system. It's easy to find it online, you can learn all about it. But no one here seems to want to talk about it even when I am on like different kinds of, on the internet, on different kinds of mediums. People aren't really listening. They don't, they don't believe me, they believe the board, they believe that what you're doing is for all of us. But there is another way and I want us to all know there is another way. And I think that maybe this town could use, maybe we could use a different way of approaching this and that you have your ideas and there are us, a bunch of us who don't want this to happen, so maybe we can have our own chair, our own committee, that we can organize all this information and get it out to everyone. I know that you used a lot of the tax money to promote your agenda, but you didn't use, you didn't, you didn't bother to mention any of the alternatives for any of us and I don't think that was fair. And I think it's about time that we let everybody know the truth, that there are other ways to do this. And they are scientific and they're proven and they're actually mandated in Suffolk County, so we know that they work. So I would like to have a committee organized, I would like to be maybe part of that committee if possible and I think that we should be able to ask our questions, have everything answered and we should be able to, somehow, I think we should be able to advise you on how we want this done. Okay? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for public comment?
Tommy Smith, 15 Carpenter Place and 16 Ty Road. I have two parcels, but I'm only entitled to one vote. I'd ask you the question, but I know the answer. That's because of the local law that you guys passed that nobody knew about. The same thing with the absentee...
That's state control of the regulation.
I know you probably published it, but who the hell looked at it and knew what you were talking about, but you guys did. Okay, same thing goes with the absentee ballot. No reason why someone who has a house in Chenarock or Lincolnville rents it out, they live in Florida, no reason why they can't have a say in it. Okay? Since I have two parcels entitled to one vote, does that mean I only get one tax bill for the water? No? Yeah, right? No? You guys, you know, think money's nothing, right? I was watching one of the meetings and I don't want to mention no names, but one of the councilmen who lives in one of the better neighborhoods was up there crying about how his neighbor lost his job and he's on unemployment. Oh, what a hardship. How are we supposed to pay an extra $2,000 a year? No? And if we're going to get sewers, how come the roads were getting paved in Chenarock? And don't say because of the hills and the curves. I've lived there 30 years, that road's been like that for 30 years. That's a waste of money, our money. That money could have been put towards the lawyer for all of us here so we know our rights. We don't understand half the stuff that's going on. We got to count on your attorney? Where is he? No?
There's a lot of questions.
And for the people who are complaining that they wanted, they want sewers instead of septic, I guess when they bought their house, they should have realized what a septic system was. Alright? When I bought my house, when I bought my second house, I understood what a septic was. Now all of a sudden, it's a surprise to people? No? You buy a house, you know what kind, what you got, was a septic or sewer, right? You don't know the difference? No? I'm a high school dropout, I know the difference.
Joe Luciano, Tim Walker Drive. This question is to the board and I've asked this question, this will be the fourth time on record. Why aren't you using the area of influence map for your sewer district? No, I don't want the answer from them, I want the answer from you, you're the board. Not going to answer.
Do you have any more public comment?
Okay, next. How about a two-part proposal to vote on? One for upgraded, modernized septic systems or sewer? Let the people pick an option showing the cost of each option. Okay, now I have a statement to make. I believe that the residents of Lake Lincolnville and Lake Chenarock, whose properties are within the boundaries of the proposed sewer district, are not being properly represented by this town board. No town board member will be on the hook for the financial payments for this proposal. Within the map and plan report, it repeatedly states "anticipated" and the town board members use the words "that is not our plan" and "for the better of the community," which leaves the door open for no limits on the tax liability for the residents within the proposed district to pay. The residents deserve a complete legal description of the project along with a total limited cost obligation to their tax bill, not a proposal with words "anticipated" hidden in many spots within the proposal. Residents should be scared. We have no representation on this board or with legal counsel. The town should have given the residents the opportunity for a committee of residents to oversee this proposal along with the funds for legal counsel. The residents should be afraid of a town board who keeps adjusting a proposal to make it look better to pass it. As the Somers board members have tried to sell you a sewer district, making claims about septic systems polluting lakes and water tables and large septic repair bills, not one board member lives in a sewer district in this town. So their septics must not be polluting anything. Okay? I have spent 46 years of my life living in three different homes with septic systems with no large septic repair bills or issues. To the residents of the proposed sewer district, would you buy a home with an anticipated price, with a mortgage, with a proposed interest rate? If you did, you would have no idea what it's going to cost you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else here for public comment?
Tough crowd. I'm Michael O'Keefe, 1 Ivy Road, Lake Lincolnville. I'm also the chairman of the Board of Lake Lincolnville Property Owners Association and I'm the lake manager of Lake Lincolnville. I've been doing that since 1993. Also since 1993, we've been participating in the Citizen Statewide Lake Assessment Program with New York State FOLA in cooperation with the DEC. What that means is every summer, from May through September, we take lake water samples and we send them to Syracuse University, the Upwater, Upstate Freshwater Institute. They process that, they test for things like phosphorus, nitrogen, a variety of things. One of the things they test for, by the way, is chlorides. You said rock salt? No, that's not a problem, we're well under the chloride count, it's not even affecting us. And we've, aside from that, we've done spot E. coli testing of the neighboring streams flowing into the lake as well as random sampling at homes of septic systems. It became very quickly apparent to us that we need to do something about the septic systems, they're failing. We also do spot checks, I still go around the neighborhood and I spot check, I can tell you whose septic system is failing, it's very obvious. And I had a chat with the superintendent of highways today and he confirmed a lot of my suspicions. So we know that this is something we need for the lakes' sake. I have some science here. A new test that we're doing since last year is chemicals of emerging concern. And what this test, the water for is pharmaceuticals, household chemicals, pesticides, fertilizers, those kind of things. And one of the things that really popped out for us is what we're seeing in our lake water is caffeine, sucralose, which is artificial sweetener. We're seeing pharmaceuticals appearing in our lake. So these are things that are not coming from the environment, these are things that are coming in from leaking septic systems and that's very clear. And that's been confirmed by the Upwater Fresh Institute. So for these reasons, the Lake Lincolnville Property Owners Association Board has resolved that we are in favor of the public's septic system.
The gentleman has the floor.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment? I will make a motion to close public comment and we'll answer some of the questions. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. So Joe, Steve, I think our first question was about the driveway?
Yeah, I think I have them all written here. I think if I have this correctly, there's about, I think, 10 comments to respond to. The first one by Ed is, was the question was, "Where are the pipes going to be in the street?" And I think we will also add to response to that, "How would the pipes be located on your property?" So typically, when we install a sewer, we'll put it down the center of the road, right? And we will work, but of course, we have to work with field conditions. So we have to do field investigations to understand where the best place to put it is, but typically, we would seek to put a sewer down, down the center of the road. Relative to your property, we will work with you to determine where the best place to come from your septic tank to the street is. So that's, that's, that's the question there. So there were some other comments about, from, from Ms. Murtha, I think, about, you know, damage to your properties. Of course, we're going to work with each of you to make sure we minimize that and the district is going, is committed to repairing all conditions when, when we're completed. The second question that I have written was, and it came up a couple of times, it was referenced as a blank check to raise taxes or unknown if we can't get the grant funding that we're going to just borrow money and layer it on, on all of you. That is not, we're not allowed to do that in accordance with the map plan and report and the state controller and the law. I mean, that's my understanding based on having conversations with the, with the town attorney. And, you know, we wouldn't be able to borrow any more than $16.2 million without a subsequent public process. So that, that just can't happen without an additional public process. So I'm glad we're able to clarify that here tonight because I've heard that, that misstatement made many times and I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that today. I also, there was a comment, again, it's connected to the flat fee, could be as much as 2,200, again, that's that same comment, it, it cannot, we can only borrow $16.2 million and rates are pretty good right now, they're probably better than we put in the report. You know, so, you know, we cannot borrow more than $16.2 million. Let me see. There was a question about the timing of the next meeting, it's, the timing of the next meeting is going to be September 10th and we're going to be identifying where the appropriate location is and that will be announced. We're going to see if the schools are open, that could potentially be an opportunity to do it there, otherwise the supervisor will, will share that. And as far as the vote, that happens after the public hearing is closed. So that will be within a window of time of 60 to 75 days after the closing of the public We had a question about, let me see, I'm just looking here. Okay, the money allocated for, in the DEP agreement, there is, there, you know, the DEP agreement is, is quite complex, there's a lot of different aspects to it. This aspect and this $50 million and the five communities are all allocated towards septics and addressing septic issues, they can't be used for other things other than septics. Historically, and all that money's been used to this point, in Peach Lake to put in sewers, in Bedford to put in sewers, in Yorktown, they're proposing sewers, in North Castle, they're proposing sewers. The only deviation from that, that the DEP has accepted, which we've spoken to this community about historically, was a septic maintenance program, but that money has since been reallocated out of that program into the sewer projects in the town of Bedford. Next meeting, what I'll do is I'll, I know that, who is that, Stephanie asked that question. I will bring a, a copy of, provide a reference specifically in the report that, in the MOU that references this money so that you can, you know, read it for yourself what, what the language says. Let me see, we had another question about, you know, one vote, you know, whether there was one, you know, how, how many homes and who votes and how many votes you get and absentee, and it was referenced that that's a town decision, I just want to clarify that. It's my understanding through conversations with the town attorney that that is the state controller's requirements, that is not a town requirement. So I just again, want to clarify the record because it's, it's something else that I've heard is being, being stated in the past. Let me see. Steve, did you have any that I missed? Oh, the influence area. So the, the influence area, when, you know, we're laying out a septic and a sewer district, we have to take the economics into consideration. Ideally, of course, we would like to have sewed, you know, all of those areas, we'd like to have, wish we had enough money to ensue everything, but it, but when we are working at laying out a sewer project, we're looking at the most efficient way to spend the money and while having the maximum environmental impact and environmental benefit. And that is the project that you see before you. Any other questions, Steve? Did the board have any that you wrote down that we missed? I think that was, those are all the ones that, that I had written down.
No, you, you answered.
Oh, I, I have one more, I have one more that was written down. It was a comment about if the power went out. I just want to, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that there is going to be 24 hours worth of, 24 hours worth of capacity at full flow, right? So obviously during a power outage, we are not generating the same amount of water, so that would be expected to last longer than that 24 hours. In addition, there, there's going to be a generator hookup so that if you had a generator, you could plug your generator in and turn that pump on. If you did not have a generator, we've committed in the past and continue that commitment that the district will have a generator and if you need, your set, your tank is getting filled and you need a pump, there's a mechanism for you to call to have them come with a generator and, and turn on and pump out your tank. Can't even read my own writing here, it's getting dark. Oh, and, and there was one other question or comment about, why aren't we having people pay for their, for their own hookups? You know, that, that to us is something and we've, you know, that could be a big burden. We're estimating that that could be on average $10,000 per home. We thought that it would... We thought that it would be better for the homeowner, it's what, like what they did in Peach Lake, which is a similar community, to spread that out across the district over time. So instead of you having to come up with maybe 10, maybe 5, maybe 15, depending upon your connection point, instead of you having to come up with that, you're going to, we're going to be able to bond that as a group over time, over a 30-year period. That will allow you to, of course, you know, keep that cost and pay that over time. So that was the, the thought process in, in having it be incorporated into the district as opposed to having that burden fall on each, each one of you individually. And lastly, I will just mention Mr. Bachelor, and, you know, relative to the alternatives, and there was also a comment about Suffolk County. You know, I'm very, we're familiar with those systems. Right now, Westchester County does not permit those, those systems to be installed.
Chenarock right now.
Right, as a repair, but it's only as--
Once again, let him answer the question.
Sir, it's only for a repair. So it's only eligible for use in Westchester County if the system fails. It is not approved for new systems or in situations other than, than repairs. And that's similar, and that system is similar to the one in Suffolk County. Okay. I'll, I'll let Steve--
Not, not a dialogue, sir.
There's one in Bedford, and Bedford's state much more stringent, above and beyond Westchester's rules.
It was again for a fail--
This, this could be clarified, sir. If you want to contact the Westchester County Health Department, and what our town engineer is saying--
Take you to one in Chenarock.
There could be hundreds of them, but what he's saying is they're not the primary use for taking care of waste. It's a, it's a standard septic system.
They are. They are.
We'll research it.
Yeah, we're going to disagree right now, and we'll have to research--
Okay, we'll, we'll look into that.
Putting out a falsehood on purpose.
No, it is, it is our, we work with the health department all the time. Those systems are used when there's a fail. It's for a corrective action. Inside of, inside of a main street area in a community, it could be, it could be different viewed by the health department for residential septic system that is not failing.
Aren't you, oh, in other words, ours aren't failing, so you don't need the sewer project.
It's, it's not--
Joe, 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 look, ants--
Sir.
We will, we will look into that. You gave us some paperwork. We'll check it out.
You just said our system's not failing.
Sir, public comment has been closed. September, September--
You didn't trust me.
He answered your question. Well, that was a mystery.
All right, we, we will look into that then, sir, okay?
Have a conversation for God's--
Sir--
You can. Call, contact them anytime. I'm sure they'd be more than happy--
Contact, contact, you're welcome to contact me. You can contact the Westchester Health Department directly.
I thought we were doing right now.
Now, this is a public hearing--
I'm telling you what my understanding is.
You're mistaken.
I'm not mistaken.
You could, they-- Joe, I'm going to ask you to cease and desist, and--
I think that's all the questions that I had.
Okay.
Good job, Joe.
So in, in wrapping up the public hearing tonight, I would like to say, we have, we have scheduled a public hearing for September 10th. We don't know the location. The governor, we don't know if we're going to be able to continue Zooming, or whether you'll be able to have the public into a building. Schools should be open at, at that point. I know we've had some meetings in the Somers Middle School auditorium. I think we could probably social distance there. We'll look into that. But as Joe mentioned, the timing is a public hearing on the 20th, excuse me, the 10th of September, and then followed by a vote 60 to 75 days after that.
And I, Rick, I would remind, I would remind the public, and both in person and on the, and on TV, that you can submit written comments at any time to us as well.
Yeah, thank you. All right, I'd like--
How come you paved the streets in Chenarock, and we're getting sued? How come? Can you answer that? And how come you can't send somebody over to the post office in Chenarock and put up the notes about me? How come? You don't want us to know that?
We, we heard from you during public comment.
You didn't say nothing.
Right. Okay.
All right, well done, Rick. Good job, Steve.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion, any other, for the comments from the board?
No.
The only, the only thing I'd say is that the town board certainly will look at every way that we can communicate the next meeting, so that as many people will know as possible.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. Good night, Somers.